Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We will start our community, the whole, meeting where we support community through quality of public service. So before we get started with our good topics this morning, let's do an introduction. So I'm Jenny Storely. I'm board chair.
I'm the district commissioner for that district over yonder up the hill.
I'm district two commissioner.
I'm district three commissioner.
Dave Melz, district three commissioner.
Carol Moore, representative of the EDA.
Jeff Campbell, county administrator.
Mike Robb, Grand Marais city administrator.
Julie Patricia, housing development coordinator for One Roof.
Jeff Corey, executive director at One Roof.
Scott Harrison, the EDA member.
Mary Somnus, executive director of the EDA.
Brady Powers, Cook County auditor.
Great. And we have our assistant back here, April. She's going to keep track of all of our notes and all of our topics today. So in our packet, we had the minutes from the last meeting, so hopefully you had a chance to review all of that. And the first topic we're going to talk about this morning is One Roof Community Housing, the 2018 annual report. Is that you, Jeff?
I think so, yeah. And I think you all received a copy of our annual report in advance. I think Mary brought those.
At last week's meeting.
They were distributed.
At last week's meeting, they were distributed.
So to be real clear, we were not planning to go through that because you're all good readers, but rather to focus on the work that we were doing up here in your community. And so that's what we're hoping to talk a bit about today. And we're real proud of both the projects that we're working on. And I think maybe even more proud of what effort the community did to band together and decide that they did indeed want to do some housing, affordable housing in Cook County, and that, you know, the grassroots effort, I think of folks, Abby Tofti, who, you know, was at bunches of community meetings, sort of getting folks to speak out about what the needs were, what people wanted. And I think I was up having some time with Bill Hanson at Lutzen Mountain probably five years ago when he introduced me to Abby and said, "You need to talk to her. There's good things happening that are in the community," and it's different now. There's, I really think there's support, and it's been very heartening to see that. So we've been coming up subsequently, me not so much. This is the first time, I think, I've announced this publicly with the tape rolling, but I'm legally blind, so if I don't recognize you, and it took me a little while, I'm pretty sure that's Heidi, but... So just know it takes a while to get imprinted, and then if you have the audacity to sort of add a beard or something, I think, Mike, the last time I saw you, that wasn't there. So I'd be like, "Who's that guy?" So I'm real friendly, but I'll pass you outside the cafe in an hour and won't know who you are. But anyway, so I don't, because of that, I have not been one of the presences for One Roof up here. I don't drive, so we take two people to make me come up here for a day. But Julie has spent countless hours up here commuting, getting work done with folks in the community to make this happen. And I want to thank you for your hospitality to her and for all your hard work, Julie. We've done a bit of restructuring at One Roof, so Cliff Canetl is no longer with us. So he had been the face of a bunch of the stuff that was happening early on up here in particular. We're looking to potentially later this year add a new staff person to help out on that director level with the development work. But, you know, we're just now, yesterday, I think, put the holes in the ground for the last of the 10 houses at the project here in Grand Marais for the first two phases. We've got six of the homes sold so far. We seem to have happy homeowners from every indication that I've got. That project has gone pretty well. I think if there's anything that, you know, just to remind you, all $100,000 from the county and $75,000 from the city sort of contributed to make that project go, plenty of other sources too. But the local money has to happen. The local organizing has to happen, or the state dollars won't flow. And you all have done your part. The one thing that has been maybe a little bit of a surprise to us as we've been selling those houses is that the demand for them from folks above 80% area median income has not been quite as high as we had thought. So that, you just never know with some things until you finish a house and put it on the market what happens. So there's been more demand from folks below 80% of area median income, and of those first 10, I think four of them only, or six of them, we had slated for the 80% AMI. So it's been a little bit slower moving them than we thought, but we're still doing okay on them. So, and the last two that are going in are priced for folks at 80% of area median income, so we're pretty sure those will go quickly. It was fun to walk the site this morning and see it. It looks great. So very, very fun to see that happening. At Lutzen, you know, we're working on 16 apartments in four buildings. The first three buildings are done. We're finishing up the, I think the septic system might be hooked up today?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow. So it's been a race against weather to make that one happen. And I believe all the units are spoken for, so that's great. I'm real happy with how the finished product is turning out in terms of those apartments, I think, are really livable. They, there's a lot of elbow room in them. I think folks that live there, if that's their home for a good while, will be comfortable and happy, and that's what we were wanting for those units, is that they're longer-term homes potentially for folks that need it. I will say one other thing just about how the work up here has gone, and that is that it's been harder than we thought. Julie and I are both pie-eyed optimists. Were we not, we wouldn't be working in the affordable housing industry. You know, much of what you do in that industry feels a little bit like pushing rope uphill. We're working against market forces. We're working against trends that have existed. When we bring new staff and board members on at One Roof, one of the first things we tell them was that if the market worked for lower-income folks, we wouldn't have jobs. Like, we're here because it's, the way this whole housing economy is connoried doesn't work for a significant part of our population, and so we've got work to do to make things more fair and more livable for the folks that we serve. So challenges coming up here, part of it is learning new things in new places, and that's to be expected. We frankly had more challenges than we had anticipated with the modular construction methodology that we were using, but in particular, the manufacturer was really challenged to meet our timelines, and a little bit less so with the houses in Grand Marais and more so with the apartments in Lutzen. Things didn't fit together quite the way that we thought they would. So it's been more rope and a steeper hill, maybe.
Yeah.
But we're getting through, and I believe the 10th of June, it looks like the last building would be delivered.
The first boxes will start on June 3rd, and they'll just keep right on going, so...
Might be a week later, but it moves on the way up.
Oh, okay. It changes every day.
Yeah, it's perfectly normal that it's changed.
Exactly. But we are in the home stretch for getting that last building here.
They'll deliver that one in St. Smith.
Yeah. Fair.
For real.
So was it different in Grand Marais? Were people less crabby on Sunday than they were in Duluth?
It didn't snow.
Oh, my goodness. Oh, wow. Yeah.
They were happy.
Folks were so grumpy on Sunday in Duluth.
I was grumpy on Sunday because it was four degrees colder up there than down.
So I guess the last thing, you know, before discussion questions, is that there is some more property at the Grand Marais site. We've incurred expenses to, you know, build that out with road and some more construction. And so we're needing to keep doing things there. We missed application timelines this June. Early June is when the state applications were due for future projects, so we just didn't have capacity to take on more of that soon up there. But we, you know, a year from now, we would fully anticipate being, pushing forward at least a project there. And, you know, we're open to talking about more in the Lutzen realm. We've got to do some thinking about how to structure the next one there, but...
But we have enough land available in Lutzen as well.
Yeah.
For future development.
I think what's not so clear there, and I haven't put a lot of thinking to it just yet, but the infrastructure that is already in in Grand Marais really supports one more thing happening. I think in Lutzen, the infrastructure that we built may not quite so naturally lead to another building, or two, or three, or four, but there is land, and it would seem need, so...
Definitely need.
So we're grateful for all the support. We're grateful for, you know, the community really coming together and deciding what it wanted to see happen up here, and we're proud to be part of it. So thank you for that partnership.
Yes, it takes a village, and thank you, everybody. Whenever I have walked through a door, it has been with open arms, what can we do to help? So thank you from the bottom of my heart.
Let's start it off, thank you for all you've done, and the positive attitude. Couldn't live without you, from my perspective. What are the options on the property and infrastructure for Grand Marais? I've heard things, but I just, what is your current thinking about some options there? Is it the current model as homes, single-family homes, or are there other considerations?
So when we first envisioned this project, which was going to be in three phases, phase three, which will be the last phase, we anticipated putting in four fourplex units for apartments. We have all the permitting through phase two, and before we would get to phase three, we would have to come back to the city council, talk about what we're going to do. So at this point, it's on the table. We do have a meeting scheduled later this afternoon with Scott and Mary to start the conversation of where do we go from here for future planning?
I think it's presently planted.
Yes.
Or at least our, and our design has four four-unit buildings.
Has been surveyed. It's been engineered, surveyed, so that was the plan at the time.
And that's still feasible with a similar kind of arrangement with the county and city? Or would it be a different kind of, who would own it? You would own it, or...
Yeah, well, you know, if it's rental housing, probably we would be the natural entity to own that. I think we need to, it will be sort of a recreation of sorts because it's so different than the Lutzen site was. The physical construction of the homes might be similar, but the financing will probably be quite different. For, I mean, we need to decide what sort of niche of income we're going for, right? So that would be part of the conversation, and then, once that's sort of decided, then the rest would follow based on what's available for that population. So one of the things that made Lutzen really challenging is we didn't want to put, when I say we, I mean all of us, didn't want income restrictions on those units. And so that dramatically reduces the number of sources that are available to us to do something. So if that's not the case for this one, then it looks different.
Yeah, and in addition to the income restrictions, Jeff, the, one of the main grant programs is only available to projects that are on city water and sewer, which we don't have in Lutzen either. So that's another difference between the two sites.
Yeah.
I would have some good news in terms of folks living, I'm in that district, district five for the apartments. The Getchigami Bike Trail is pretty close to deciding that their bike trail will be along by the highway rather than in the woods.
Okay.
So for the folks who live in the apartments, that might be good news, or the bike trail will be finished hopefully during this year.
Nice.
Just to get to work.
Yeah.
We've already been contacted, just so you know, so there, and we've shared our plans and engineering drawings with the folks that are working on the trail.
The last meeting in Lutzen will be this Thursday at 6:00 for the folks to come. We've had a good turnout, 20 to 25 people, so the last phase, hopefully, will be there to help with the...
That's great.
...decision-making, too. As far as the infrastructure there in Lutzen, it must be very challenging to figure out where a well will be and where the septic will be in terms of then expanding in the future.
I think the biggest key is where's the lead rock? We've learned a lot about rock in the last couple of years.
And a witcher, and tired of witcher.
Lots of lead rock. It adds to the complexity of developing.
There's plenty of that in Duluth.
Right.
So the septic and wells were pretty big learning curves for us, though.
What does One Roof do for this project?
Sort of depends on how one measures. So we...
Number of units.
Yeah, so we led the two significant multifamily projects in Duluth, but we partnered with another agency. And when we were done with the project, we turned it over to them. So we led the real estate development and the bulk of the fundraising. So those two projects were Steve O'Neill Apartments, which is 50 units of permanent supportive housing for homeless families with dependent children. If you know where the Damiano Center is in Duluth, it's kitty corner from the Damiano Center on the 100 West block of Fourth Street. So we also did the Gateway Tower redevelopment. So when you're driving through Duluth, there's a building that got a facelift about a year and a half ago. The top of it now is blue and it fades to gray. It's by the library, real visible from the freeway as you come into town. That's a 150-unit project that we worked again with Center City Housing. We acquired the building from the housing authority, who pulled it out of foreclosure, and it raised about $18, $19 million to redo that one. So both of those were low-income housing tax credit projects. There's a degree of complexity around those that, well, Lutzen actually might rival it. But it's...
Yes, it's a rival.
When we had the ribbon cutting, I was listening to all the partnerships, and I'm like, oh, this sounds kind of familiar.
I was curious if you've had any talks with the city and their site with potential development?
Oh, of the city hall location?
So far, none.
We haven't.
One thing that may make some sense to contemplate is, I think it is possible to do two separate sites similar time as one project for some funding sources. And, you know, 16 units is on the small side for a tax credit project. The bulk of the rental housing that's produced in the country since about 1990 has been low-income housing tax credit funded. It's, the reason is because it brings just a huge percentage of equity to each project that, through the sale of the tax credits. So just to give you a sense, I believe the Gateway project was about $18 million, and I think about $15, $15.5 million of it was tax credit equity. So that really reduces the amount of money that you have to raise if you can get those credits. They're highly competitive. We're putting in two applications in June for projects in Duluth. The word on the street is they're expecting 100 applications at the state. They've already pushed the application decision date back a month to give them more time to review applications.
But you don't even get to the table unless you have scale.
True, but the one project we're going for is 35 units. So if you can get to 30, 20 to 30, it's worth looking at, which is why I mentioned the potential for another site pairing with the one here. And I think that, you know, well, as a community, you all need to sort of be thinking about what the biggest need is for the next thing that happens, but from our perspective, that affordable rental is a piece that hasn't happened yet. Maybe does make sense.
Because they've been, much because they've been taught with Grant Portage, I know that's a pretty big read for some of them there, too, but again, you build on that. That's one of the tricks here.
We haven't. One thing that we have done, however, is the Fond du Lac Band has invested both in community land trust houses that we've done in Duluth and in Cloquet, and they've made a pretty substantial commitment to the, one of the projects that we're working on getting funding for now, rental projects. So in exchange for those investments, the land trust houses, we make available exclusively to band members, and then we'll reserve a percentage of units in the new building for band members. So if, I mean, that would be a natural, potential way to work together if...
You do know they're further north. When we first came and talked to you, you're like, "Where? Do you want us to go?"
Yeah, well, and that's why I was suggesting they may want to invest in something that happens here if there are folks that want to live here.
Tribal members of that want to live in Grand Marais?
Yeah.
But is there anything that would preclude you, other than geography?
From going further?
From, there isn't anything that would preclude you from working on tribal land?
No.
You could. So we could have that conversation.
I don't know. I mean, you know a better reason. But I don't know if those band members are just employees or something. Everything, everything. Yeah. I think it's 68, 80, 90.
Oh, my goodness.
Wow.
Yeah.
68?
Wow.
Wow. Well, our work is never going to be done.
Have there been any updates, Mike, as far as the city hall property?
I don't know what you know.
It's a semi-doubled.
Okay, yes, there have been updates.
Oh, great. Please share some...
I mean, in terms of the context of this conversation, it's probably not the right use. Even if it's a part of the use, it's not what's going to drive the development, so up at the top of the site, that's maybe a different story.
Sure.
It can stand on its own, but it's just housing. But we're looking for a developer to do the whole project, and I don't think anyone wants to build us retail. So they'll probably be a great partner if we end up having to put together a team. We'll see.
Right, because of the vision for the city hall location is potentially offices and retail and housing.
Yeah.
All of that. So it's a different kind of project than your typical project.
Yeah, I suppose you are restricted to two houses. That's your organization's mission.
Largely. I mean, the Brewery Creek project we're working to get funding for presently has a retail component. However, we did a pivot a little over a year ago in our planning on it and decided that the most feasible retail use of that would be to have our office be there for a whole bunch of reasons. When you go for tax credit funding for a development that has a retail component, the state basically pulls that piece out and analyzes the rest of it, but puts the responsibility of funding that squarely on your shoulders. But most of the time, those dollars from the state can't help with it. In our instance, in Duluth, because our office being there would be a community service space, and because it's in a qualified census tract, we can actually include it in the basis for the tax credit calculation, and it can pay for a significant component of the build-out. If it's a true commercial use, that's, meaning not a community service use, that isn't the case. And we, I don't think we're looking for an office up here just yet, so...
We'll keep working on that.
Yeah.
Frank, big.
Yeah.
The places are closer to Grant Portage.
It would get...
Julie basically has an office in city hall.
Exactly. They make a table available whenever I come in.
You've been too good for her, too, or she doesn't... She hasn't complained of it once.
I just want to say thank you for being willing to listen to us when we came to you because it was a big ask. And then everything you've done ever since. And I'm sorry it clicked like this, we stressed before we got out, I'm sure some of it is. But you guys have been wonderful to work with since day one.
Well, back at you, everybody, and honestly, I'm really proud of the community up here. I think it's wonderful that, you know, this was not the first try, right? It wasn't even our first try. One might say it was for sure our second, and there might have been a third one in there, too, depending on how things went, you know, a number of years ago. So it only happened because the community decided to make it happen. Kudos to you all for being part of that.
You know, and at the end of the day, everything that we do, sorry, I'm going to have a tear. I met one of the homeowners last week, and we've changed her life. It's amazing what a difference her home has made in her life and the life of her kids. And she has a disabled son. And both of her kids came up to me and hugged me and thanked me for the home.
This is the lady that helped to build our house.
That's why we're here. It's not about me. It's not about One Roof. It's about the people that we're serving. She's got a story that she's ready to share, so we hope to make that happen.
Yeah.
Sorry, I'm not a big crier.
Usually, that's my job.
Give me the towel, Jeff. I need it this time.
For different reasons.
All kinds of reasons. Seriously, our tagline is, "We make home a better place." So all the things we do are about that. And that, that's a great story because that's a foundational thing for that family to have that home base that they can operate from. And then you all know what everybody's capable of doing, you know? I like to tell folks I got free lunch when I went to school because my family was low-income. My dad handed me my diploma because he was on the school board. Like, I know what low-income people can do if they have a good home. We were on the Great Grandma Rent Your Farm Housing Program. That's how my family happened to do it, you know? But it really is that home base is what allows a family to thrive and allows them to give back to the community and not just be great employees and students, but to give more than that, which is what makes a community go, so...
So maybe with that story, and when we get the final unit in Lutzen, we can have a ribbon cutting and a celebration.
That would be fun.
It's time.
What we have been doing.
Yeah. We like planning the celebrations.
I'll leave it up to Mary.
We'll do it.
Now, that's your department, isn't it?
Yeah. Gothic. My pleasure. Well, and it's, I think, time for us to wrap, probably. You have another...
Unless anyone else has any questions or comments?
Just one last thanks to Mary and Scott. Like, walking with the EDA folks has been good work, so really appreciate that partnership.
I'm really thankful and grateful for your willingness to continue and to do more, and I hope working on our project has somehow helped your organization expand or just rethink things, and I hope it means you're beneficial, so thank you very much.
Yeah. It's very good.
Yeah, I'd also like to do, and I'd like to have that discussion with you about how we, Grant Portage, that's one of the things that I would like to see our younger people up there, band members and whatnot. A lot of them live in housing, and I would like to see them taking the home... and whatnot, a lot of them live in housing, and I would like to see them taking the home ownership and open that up.
Sure.
Okay. We'll do it, Bob.
Yeah.
And lastly, I would like to thank Brady. Brady, you have been awesome working with us on the construction draws for Lutzen and all of the behind scenes for Lutzen. So thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, and Jeff as well.
Thanks for mentioning that.
Great teamwork.
Yes, it takes a village.
Sometimes you have to go outside the village, too.
Welcome to the village. One roof. No. Oh. No.
Brady likes the.
Is there a shirt in mine? Well, this is actually my shirt.
Thank you, everyone. You didn't get the memoir.
I have one on the microphone.
Okay.
We have extras, you can line them. Would you like one? Probably. Yeah. Oh, yeah, we got plenty to share. He's over here, but you, Brady, if there's any others. Well, hi. Well, thank you. Thank you. Well, thank you, Madam Chair, I appreciate it. And, and Rested Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity here this morning. I really appreciate it. So my name is Tom Supas. I am now Cook County's Risk Management Consultant with MCIT. I have the pleasure now to work with, with Cook County. There's been some changes with our, with our staffing and territories. I don't know if you knew Bob Gady, Jane Henninger, they both have retired. Joel Swanson was with us for a while. He actually has moved on. So I have the thrill. So I have appreciated working with Jeff and Brady and others here. Had the opportunity actually to come up here last year, did a training program, Protect Your Property, which was, which was really fun. So again, so this is my first board report, really, for, for Cook County. So this is the 2019 Board Report to our, to our boards. We do this every other year to kind of coincide with elections. So welcome to Commissioner, welcome. Just to kind of talk about, kind of what's going on with MCIT, kind of respecting your time, what does, I'll just touch on some of the highlights here of, of 2018, some of the changes for 2019. We have some, some coverage enhancements I think you might find interesting. So to, just to review, now, as many of you probably already know, but maybe for Commissioner Mills, is that MCIT, we're not an insurance company. You know, we're a risk-sharing pool. We were built for counties by counties, as well as all of, really, all the affiliated entities, like the Southern Water Conservation Districts and all the others. And so, you know, we're constantly trying to, you know, update and, and change our coverage to really build around what counties are doing. So, you know, we provide, you know, property casualty and workers' compensation coverage. But we also, I think more importantly, provide the risk management, loss control, other services, again, to try to be there for you to help. That's really what we try to focus on. And then to provide that coverage there as, as you need it. So we try to, again, to try to expand and, and build coverage as we need it. I mentioned, you know, it's really built for counties, so we have eighty-one of the eighty-seven counties in, in the, the trust. So this, I won't mention the eighty-one, but I'll mention the six that are not. And they're primarily the, the counties that are self-funded, Hennepin and Ramsey County, Anoka and Dakota County, St. Louis County, and Olmsted County are the six counties that are relatively self-funded. But we also have really over three hundred and eighty of these affiliated entities, you know, the, like I say, the Southern Water Conservation Districts, Historical Societies, Agricultural Societies, and Fair Boards, other joint powers boards and so forth. So they all are covered by MCIT. Our board, the MCIT Board, is really built very similar to yours. You know, county commissioners, we have administrators coordinators, we have auditors treasurers, again, they're all kind of, so, so that they can understand kind of what, what counties are doing and how to really try to, you know, update our coverages to, to build into the county's needs. Back, just a little history, late in the nineteen seventies is when, nineteen seventy-nine is actually when MCIT was born. Back in that time, it was getting very difficult for counties to get coverage, primarily law enforcement was the part that it was really hard to get affordable workers' compensation coverage that, and even to find a carrier. And so the counties decided, well, let's just pool our monies. Let's pay our own work comp claims. So they did. It was so successful that really about the mid-eighties is when they actually then started adding the property coverage, the auto coverage, the liability coverage. You know, we talked about property casualty. Casualty is really liability coverage. And so that has been, so really since, as we say, we're celebrating really forty successful years with all of our members, and we're grateful for that opportunity. In the, in the forty, in the, kind of the center of this front page, kind of just mentions some of the, 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 really, the, the keys of what our members have done and, and really kind of embracing our loss control and risk management services all over the, just the MCIT program. And, and I think MCIT's commitment, again, you know, making, changing our, our coverages to, to meet your needs. MCIT, and again, with Cook County, has been with the, the trust since nineteen eighty-one. It's really one of the original members, so we are grateful. All right, moving on, let me go on to page two. The second page here, kind of on the left margin, we'll kind of start there. This summarizes really our rate history. I'm gonna talk about our, our coverage rates. Now, historically, our rates really have been declining. And again, that's purposeful, again, to try to keep some of those, you know, monies really in your pockets for the, the work that you do. So really, five of the last eight years has either declined or stayed steady. The property casualty rates have really decreased substantially, really almost thirty-one percent over these last, you know, since two thousand and ten. Workers' compensation is down a little over thirty-two percent, which is rare because most workers' compensation carriers are increasing rates dramatically because of the costs out there. But again, that is our, our members' work on a day-to-day basis, really, to keep everybody safe and get them through their day, get everybody through their day for the counties. So we greatly appreciate that. Again, our rates, MCIT's rates, the, the future rates are based upon previous claims. And so that's why, you know, we're all kind of in this together to try to manage those and, and minimize those. We actuarially fund all of our, you know, expected claim costs. That keeps the fund completely funded as a just-in-case. And that's where, again, hopefully, we'll talk about dividends here in a moment, is again, that can actually, you know, if not needed, can return some of those monies back to the counties and back to our members. The other benefits of really being in a pool like this is just that rate stability, which is really helpful. Again, so that way you can have a little bit more of a prediction of, of what your costs might be, and, and that you can kind of hopefully, you know, budget accordingly. The bottom of that page just talks about dividends a little bit. And again, I think dividends are probably the fun part to talk about, is that, is that, yes, that, you know, MCIT, again, they're, they're not, as this green box kind of talks about down here, again, they're not, not guaranteed. Traditional carriers or insurance companies will return those monies back to their stockholders. Well, MCIT can return those monies back to our members and ultimately, really, the taxpayers. And so another great benefit of being in a risk-sharing pool like this. So as it mentions, again, the MCIT Board reflects really past claim history. As it says, only if it's actuarially sound and fiscally prudent to return those dividends. But again, the board has decided for, again, through eighteen, to return eleven point seven five million dollars back to all the members. And you can see, you know, the Cook County's dividend here, and so we're proud to present and, and provide that here at the end of the, the year. So congratulations on that. Moving on, let's talk about claims, since claims kind of drive these rates. And ultimately, the more claims, again, reduces that, that dividend pool. And so again, as we work together, so kind of in the middle of the page here talks about, about claims. The top one talks about property casualty, and I mentioned casualty is liability claims. So you can see, it, it mentions the frequency of claims, the number, and then the severity, how much they cost. Well, you can see auto is really the leading, you know, risk for frequency and for severity. In fact, frequency over sixty-one percent, you know, severity, again, almost the, the same over, and as, as well. GL, that's a general liability claims, are kind of second there. Property claims, kind of on the, also provide some, some risk and, and some cost areas. Bottom of the, the sections talk about public employees' liability, oftentimes maybe be, you know, could be a discrimination claim or some of those types of claims with high defense costs, can drive some of those costs, as well as some law enforcement. There is some law enforcement, and again, that's another area of, of claim activity, really, for the trust. The bottom of the page talks about workers' compensation. And you can see, you know, where those by department or office, those claims come from. And again, you see that sheriff and highway have probably the highest frequency as well as severity, but not surprising, you know, with twenty-four-hour service, as well as some of the higher-risk, you know, occupations that are in those groups. That's why they are, and that's why we have so many programs that are really helping try to build. And, you know, through, we have a loss control consultant just for, for law enforcement, Keith Turnus, he is available to help on the law enforcement side. Again, Nick Lindberg is your loss control consultant for really all other OSHA and so forth matters, again, to try to, you know, zero in on these. Now, on the lower bottom of that center section talks about workers' compensation and Cook County. Now, workers' compensation is really the only coverage area that is actually experience-rated. In other words, how the county does determines how much contribution or the cost. Where really the property, liability, auto are neutral. The experience is not calculated into future rates. So another benefit, again, of being in a risk-sharing pool, but workers' compensation is a little bit different. So it kind of talks about that each county or each member has what's called an experience modification factor, and that would really a base work comp rate, if you will, based upon the occupations and the rate for that occupation. So that would be kind of the base cost, and then, and consider that a one-point-zero actuarially. So if your modification factor is greater than one, then there would be a little bit more contribution over a base cost. If we can get that experience modification under one, then there's actually a, a reduction in those workers' compensation costs. And so you can kind of see in the red box there of where Cook County has been, so the two thousand and nineteen work comp rate is a little over one, so it's a one-point-one-seven. So there's a little additional cost then for workers' compensation. You can see kind of the, talks about the, the previous years. So two thousand and eighteen is not actually calculated in this mod, it's a three years prior to that. Two thousand and eighteen, some of those claims have not fully developed yet, so we don't, we don't include the most recent year, but the three previous years. So you can see those experience mods. So a little, a little comfort, just looking at, that two thousand and fifteen rate of the one-point-seven-eight, that will drop off next year. And then actually, two thousand and eighteen will come on. So, you know, that might be good news, really, for the rate for next year, and continuing, you know, kind of what you're doing. Mentioning that we're available to assist. We, we try to, really try to provide a lot of programs to try to mitigate some of those risks and, and increase, again, the, the opportunities to try to decrease some of the workers' compensation costs. All right, moving on, let's talk about some of the enhancements. So this on the right-hand column, that light blue. So the MCIT Board, they're constantly, again, trying to look for and respond to, you know, members' questions and, and coverage requests. So few changes, the data compromise cyber one, so unfortunately, that's an emerging risk. So the board has actually increased the limits from fifty thousand dollars up to a hundred thousand dollars, not really driven by need, but just to provide greater protection for our counties as, and again, that's a four-tier. So it's actually a hundred thousand dollars for first party, which means is a county harmed by a data breach of some kind. And then is there a third-party group that was also harmed by that? There's another hundred thousand dollars of coverage there. And then on the cyber one would be the computer attack. Unfortunately, there's some of those folks that need more to do and are just, you know, attacking in the systems and some holding a hostage. And so coverage there, again, first party and third party of another hundred thousand each. So additional coverage, again, was, was provided to our members. Builder's risk, if you're doing any construction or addition projects, so that rate was upped automatically from five hundred to seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So if your project is over that, then you would need builder's risk coverage outside of the trust. But that builder's risk is, is critical because projects are at risk when they're under construction. Things can happen, they can go wrong. So that is enhanced. Drones is a new coverage. So as of, prior to, you know, January first of nineteen, it was really only law enforcement for special operations really was, had coverage. Now drones have become a tool, really a useful tool. And so now any department, any use, as long as it's, the drone is owned by the county, operated by a county, you know, employee under FAA regulations, is covered, both on the property side and liability. So if you're considering a drone, but again, they're using those in different ways now, for bridge inspections, to land inspections, to all kinds of different things. So again, drones, they are now covered. They have to be endorsed, so if you, I don't know, if you have a drone right now or considering, if you are, again, just, it has to be endorsed for coverage. Another one, electronic data processing, all of that equipment, some of that was now upgraded, so some limits were changed and, and increased, software limits were increased. So again, these are just enhancements at, at really no additional cost. And class-three dams were also added. Class-three dams, again, as defined by the Department of Natural Resources, those are, those are the dams that are downstream of that dam, if, if that were to fail, that there really is no risk to human life, that the local area is really minimal damage, where class-one, class-two are still excluded by MCIT. So again, those are automatically covered. So another enhancement, questions about any of those? All right, moving on, last page, let's just talk about some of our services. And again, this is where we try to really focus some of our efforts, again, to try to help all of our members, but especially our counties, try to focus in where some of their risks are. So again, as your risk management consultant, I'm, I'm available to help in any way, from, from coverage questions to liability questions, to contracts reviewed from a risk management perspective. So again, and I can help identify what's covered and what's not covered. That's kind of key at times, is to make sure you truly understand kind of where, you know, where you stand. I mentioned the loss control consultants can really help focus in on claims and where some of that activity is and how to, how to, you know, again, try to mitigate some of those risks. So I mentioned, you know, a loss control, a law enforcement, as well as OSHA, is available. Moving down to the light blue box here, there's just some ongoing trainings that we offer, ongoing seminars, so check out our website, mcit.org, for some of our training programs that we offer. We also provide that, that patrol program for your ongoing peace officers. They have their, their post-training, so again, your officers are involved in that training, that's provided by MCIT and the League of Minnesota Cities and the Sheriff's Association, so that's a, a program. Want to mention defensive driving, is a, you know, auto, we have about ten thousand vehicles that we cover, and so that's why that risk is so high. Defensive driving, you're also members of Minnesota Safety Council as a part of being MCIT. So a defensive driving class, again, can be either a twenty minutes online class or a two hours on-site. And again, can be provided for passenger vehicles, buses, or large trucks. And again, to try to encourage all of us to kind of look at our driving habits, improve our habits where we can, minimize collision potential and so forth, again, to try to reduce some of those auto costs and work comp risks. So again, that's available. So again, that's available at no additional cost, so again, you may want to check that out. Moving up to the employee assistance program, again, that's in the green boxes here. That's also, I mean, a risk management tool to try to intervene early, provide a service that is really for all elected officials, as well as the employees and all their immediate family. It's, it's a, it's a program that can be up to four visits per issue, so it's not per year, but to try to, again, help intervene early before things start to, because life can kind of pile up on us sometimes. And so that's a service that's available, it's voluntary, it's confidential, and again, all a part of membership. You can see we're in the red ribbon up here, so Cook County is, is obviously, you know, promoting and, and, you know, folks are aware of that program, so keep up the great work there. Uh, so a good participation level is here. Uh, mentioned some of our materials where we kind of focus, that's in kind of the gray box here, you know, deer vehicle collisions, trying to minimize those, those unfortunately happen. So again, a risk to the, the drivers as well as the vehicles. The training, safety officer program for law enforcement training to try to minimize some of those risks are step wisely, to try to, that's continuing. Slip and fall is still an ongoing, you know, hazard year-round. So some of those programs are available. Um, I don't know, bring it down to, you know, we're commissioners, we just greatly appreciate what you do. I mean, really, I, I really respect, um, all the work that you folks do, it's, it's amazing. But again, just to provide that leadership and support of the ongoing kind of risk management, also available to help. If you're looking at contracts, again, I can help, you know, look from a risk management perspective, which is really coverage, as well as indemnification, who's going to do what if something goes wrong, kind of, who's paying for what? That's where we kind of focus in. But again, just appreciate all of theirs, your support. So really on behalf of our MCIT board, all of our service team and staff, we just greatly appreciate your ongoing membership, participation, and support of our program. So with that, that concludes our report.
Questions, comments?
Okay, all kinds of questions.
Fantastic. Yeah, please.
We can start at the back and move forward. For the EAP, the percentages, what are, what are the percentages?
That just means from how many, how many are eligible to participate, as well as how many participate in the program. And so it's, it's wonderful, again, so those are services that are available. It's, we want to see them being used. And so that's, that's a great thing, so that's where those percentages come from.
So all of our county employees are eligible?
Exactly, as well as all the elected officials and your immediate family are all eligible to participate.
And so, yeah, so those are significant, yeah, significant uses?
Yeah, which is helpful, that's good, that's a good thing. You know, intervene early before something starts to...
It's good to talk.
Exactly.
Yeah, that's great. Well, that answers that, thank you. As far as the mod rates are concerned, what is the range there, 0 to 2?
Well, again, so, so 1.0 would be the actuarially expected, you know, losses for a classification employee group and their rate. So if it's over one, um, then it, yeah, there's an increased cost. So there are some, yeah, that could go up close to two.
To two would be max?
Well, there's really no max, unfortunately, you know, so, and then, you know, the below one, um, you know, the lower the better, you know, to get into the, you know, you were, again, to be in the 80s or 90s is wonderful, 70s is, is great, you know, so again, that, those are difficult. Everybody's on board on those. You need, you know, a little bit of good fortune as well as, you know, solid return-to-work programs, get, get folks back contributing, trying to minimize, but again, prevent is the key, is some of those costs. So, so that's where that's experience mod, how that, those numbers work.
And that's, and that's just, that's just, you know, experience is only what the workers...
Exactly, that's correct. The rest are really neutral, so that's the only one that changes of contribution rates.
Uh, but, but the others still could change the dividend.
Absolutely, exactly, that's right on.
So, um, as far as the property casualty claims, um, when we're talking auto...
Yep.
I notice there's also a separate category for law enforcement. If there's a law enforcement auto accident, is that auto or is that law enforcement?
Well, that's typically, it's still auto, you know, and again, but at the stop, and if there's contact and whatever, or use of force or whatever, then that becomes the liability side of that property casualty. So there's a property claim and potentially a liability claim too.
And this is just all of MCIT?
All of MCIT, yeah, so, and that's really from, you know, this, these years, 2014 to 2018, so again, it's, it's that time period for the entire trust, yes.
Well, so where I'm going with this is we're just having discussions about our jail and transporting.
Sure.
And, and so there is significant transport and on-the-road time with law enforcement, and so that's...
Right, so there's an auto risk, yeah.
So to minimize that risk, we do the transport as little as possible, although...
What's another one?
Transport, okay, not, not a claim.
(laughing).
Well, that answers a lot of questions.
Good.
I, I guess the first question I had too is how, so MCIT is lowering the aggregate rates just by preventative measures?
Yes.
Education and, I mean...
And, and all of the above, it, it really is. And again, and then, and then with that, you know, a lot of those rates, again, they're, you know, we invest, you know, that, your monies while it's in, in, in the pool and in the trust. Uh, but again, those rates, those investment rates have declined as well, there's less money going in because the rates have lowered. But again, that's still, and then as you mentioned, collectively, claims will, will reduce that amount. But, you know, it's, it's really the members that have been driving this and, and really trying to minimize those risks and increase those dividends.
Well, that, that reduction, I think, is just incredible, and you could probably sell that beyond county.
Well, and again, our coverage is really only for public entities and subject to, you know, chapter 466 of state requirements as far as torque caps and others, so, but yeah, so all your affiliated groups, again, so yeah, our, our goal is to, is to provide the best coverage for our members that we can and then help them minimize those risks and costs.
Very successful.
No, thank you, and thank you to the county and everybody here.
Tom, I would ask a question. Enterprise is working with a lot of counties and a lot of public agencies as far as fleet management. How does that, does that have any impact on liability insurance for autos, for counties?
As far as a, a reduction or a credit, so again, as I mentioned, you know, those other, those other lines of, of property and auto, what are, are neutral. So again, like you say, you know, adding things to buildings and security systems and camera systems or adding other, again, doesn't really affect, there's really no credits or, or reductions or deductions if you don't have those things. So the only thing, again, the value would be minimizing some of those costs, reducing incidents, um, as well as potentially, you know, you know, lessening, I guess, if you will, some of those risks.
Can you buy smarter cars, somebody who's in care of the drivers?
And, and I, I don't know, it might be appropriate to just have a round number of the stuff that's covered by MCIT for the county. Uh, I just got an update of an inventory, and I think off the top of my head, we have $35 million worth of buildings and another $5 to $10 million worth of property that's insured. We have a fleet of above 20 vehicles, and then over in the highway department, well, and that's on a county law enforcement, but 20 vehicles for, for the general county fleet, and then about $7 million worth of capital vehicles that we maintain in our highway department. So it's, it's a significant number that, that they're insuring on our behalf and taking care of, so getting, getting that reported, looking at it every once in a while is, is mind-blowing, to know how big that is.
Yeah, and that's kind of what we were trying to do last year when we did that protect your property program, and the sheriff was here and others, is to try to make sure all of your belongings, if you will, are actually scheduled where they should be and that the values are correct, just in case something were to happen, that we can bring you back to, you know, where you were. So, yeah, there, there is a significant amount of, of risk and cost.
Do you have any sense of other states in the vicinity of the counties?
There are other risk-sharing pools, yeah. They're finding it's, it's just, if, providing, if they have enough of the structure, you know, the loss control, the risk management, the other structures within that to try to mitigate and control some of those costs, but they find it, it's much easier to try to pool their resources than it is to try to find conventional carriers. And it's really, it's, it's truly still law enforcement, that, that a lot of carriers just don't have enough understanding, or they just price that, you know, again, so high, that it makes it difficult really for a lot of public entities to really afford that. So that's why they find it's easier just to, to join together to provide those coverages.
I've got another question.
Please.
It just goes back, I assume it has something to do with statute, but I know back in the 80s, this shows a whole lot, we're in discussions of self-insured, you know, our school insurance.
Sure.
And so, was there ever any consideration for counties statewide to get into medical insurance?
It was looked at, really for a while, in fact, MCIT looked in that a little bit.
That's my question.
Yeah, yeah, and just found the, the risks, the exposures were harder to kind of control, uh, the costs were difficult, um, some folks were in, some were out, again, there, it turned to be more of an adverse risk pool. Again, you wanted to make sure you had all, you know, and so it, it was, it was a difficult one to be in, so they found that that was not advantageous.
On the age of the employees or, yeah?
Well, and health insurance costs have probably changed significantly since then, so I wonder if maybe...
Absolutely.
Looking at again?
Well, and again, I think, I think there are others that are trying to really, you know, look into that. I don't know if MCIT is really considering that, you know, and again, if, if, if members are interested to pass it on to the, you know, the MCIT board, but I think, at this point, I don't think they have an appetite to really get back into that industry.
Don't worry.
Right?
At the state level, resources have been allocated to the service, some service conferences, 13 different service conferences that provide pooling of health insurance for schools and public employers. Thank you, I'm on the board for the RV Service Conference, or Service Club, so if you want history in that, health insurance is its own animal, and that's how the state has pooled that risk, and, and I don't have time to talk about that. But, you just have a good mind. Although, nobody can tell you what's going to happen five years down the road.
Yeah, yeah.
Now, did we, did we, were we all going to get assigned a drone, is that what you...
Oh, yes, yes. Each district, yes.
Throw in?
The one that I just looked at that law enforcement was using in another county was $8,000.
Yeah.
So, we're not cheap. If you could make a suggestion to your board for the EAP...
Yeah.
Some flexibility on the four sessions, I'm actually using the program and four sessions is in the house.
Right, okay.
I want to let them know the EAP county commissioner requires extensive care.
I can identify a new issue in the fourth session.
Yeah, yeah.
It's just, figure out a way to get it renewed.
But, if there's a little flexibility, if they could look at that, I mean, since it is a per situation item.
Sure.
That was great to hear, it was per.
Per issue, yeah, you know...
I had no idea, but that's...
Right, and as well as hopefully there's enough traction, you know, after though, but again, sometimes, yeah, that's not sufficient, and, but, and so then there are other costs, you know, reductions, however...
Yeah, the therapist has to report back, and so I have one session left that I'm kind of holding, but if I have...
I will, I will bring that back and let them try to consider and see if they can, you know, again, for cost-effectiveness for all members.
Yeah, because every situation is different.
Absolutely.
For some it's one, and for some it might be six or seven on that one incident.
Sure, I will bring that back.
I'm still a commissioner because of the programs you've been...
Wonderful. Well, and again, yeah, you, you have a lot going on, and again, that's why elected officials and their families, because again, anything happens with our families, we carry that with us too. And so again, that's just a, you know, a good risk management, hopefully intervene early.
I don't know, my husband's ability to ignore me has gotten much better. He doesn't get any... So I was wondering on the dividend, is there a timeframe on that?
Typically towards the end of the year, about November, yeah, December you'll see that.
We have to leave.
Yep.
It's the same all the time?
Yes.
Do you budget this every year and down?
Not to tell me.
Not to budget that, yeah, you can't count on those, though, it's not guaranteed. However, the board has returned, again, as you see, the 24th time, so it's, it is...
Risk analysis on it, we include some of it.
There you go.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you so much for your time, I greatly appreciate it, it was a pleasure, yeah, so please, anything I can do to assist, you let me know.
And Nick is amazing.
What's that?
Nick is amazing.
Good. Yes, he really is. And I know Keith, if, if, again, it's Keith Turnus, his law enforcement, you know, he's a, he's a retired chief, and so he's available as well. So, again, to try to assist and help, but wonderful, I'll let Nick know.
Phone number back here, is that to you or to the office?
Uh, let's see, the phone numbers, again, primarily, uh, let's see.
That's a 6, I thought that must be...
651 or the 1-866?
Yes, yeah, that's main office.
Can you reach through there?
Yes.
All right.
Okay.
Very nice, thank you.
Thank you so much, thank you for your time, thanks a lot, yeah.
Okay, so we have standing reports, and all the gentleman's safety... Look through that, and then go ahead, anything on that?
Madam Chair, I would just, I would just note that we do some confusion. Those are just intended to be the minutes of the standing committees, they are not intended to be a discussion item at this meeting.
Just in case anybody had questions.
Yep, so we're actually going to change that heading to say minutes of standing committees going forward, and then say for information only, so that, you know, they're not a part of the conversation.
Okay, and then finally, the general government committee, Jeff has done some updating from our board meeting, and he'll have that ready for us to look at, um, next week, but we also have a heads-up on our district meeting, that, that's going to be part of our discussion there, so maybe we need to pause everything and find out what other counties are doing, have they always copy everything they're doing, but have a broader general idea of what the other folks in our district are talking about. Anything else? Okay, so we will adjourn. Thank you for coming.